We're getting the new year off to an interesting start. Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen, coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room here at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda this week, we've got a training update, completed streets, and a license change. Now here's the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ed Kimball.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting. Would you all please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance led by our Veterans Agent, Tony Materna.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience, participants, and general public should be aware that any and all portions of this open meeting may be recorded by audio and video resources. All or some of this meeting may be rebroadcast periodically by WRPS or other outlets. Persons wanting a DVD copy of this meeting should contact WRPS or the Board of Selectmen's office. A small fee will be charged. With that tonight, we don't have anything for open forum. So next up on the agenda is minutes. Item number two, open session minutes of December 20th, 2016.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? Next up on the agenda, on the unfinished business, we have item three, OPEB, otherwise known as...
Other Post-Employment Benefits.
Benefits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, at the last meeting, we were somewhat surprised, I don't want to say surprised, but we weren't fully aware that we were going to get a presentation from Plymouth County regarding OPEB and a proposal that they had before the board, and they were, you know, trying to hawk or sell to the Board of Selectmen. And we had indicated that, I had indicated that Eric and I would like to come back at the following meeting and let you know what we're doing. We're not unaware of the OPEB problem. It is a big problem, but we have been addressing that for the last few years. Eric, I think you had a presentation you wanted to provide that, you've had Parker Elsmore here a couple of times. I know it's a little bit of a dry topic, but Parker Elsmore does our actuarials, goes back and says, "This is the situation in the town." We've actually dropped a couple, we've dropped in our obligation a little bit as a result of the healthcare reform in the past, but that will not stay. And it is a problem that we have to address, but I want to let the board know that previous boards have endorsed our programs through the budget, and Eric and I have been working on this for a number of years.
So bear with me, because if you really want to be board, put an actuarial together with an accountant, and then you'll come up with this report. So back in '04, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board posted GASB-45, which required that we take a look at our other post-employment benefits and what are we obligated to pay currently for what the employees have earned. As you know, each year, you've got employees that are working here, and with that, we each earn the right to retire through the Plymouth County system, and as well, you obligate yourselves locally here to pay for other benefits such as healthcare, dental insurance, things like that, that are paid for on currently a 75-25 split. That being said, that accumulates, and accumulates to quite a bit of money. At this present value right now of what we're obligated for, the last valuation that you have before you, it shows that we owe $68 million in other post-employment benefits heading out. Now, you had Plymouth County come before you last time, and I've got to tell you, I'm surprised and disappointed that we were not notified that they came here, because we have had a chance to go through and look at this. We have had Parker come back here. We're required to have him review this every two years. I carefully review it. He says that I'm actually one of the few accountants that he sees that actually reads through this stuff, asks the questions, and asks, "What is it that we can do about it?" I've been very proactive with the town for this since the very beginning. GASB-45 made us take a look at what these numbers are, and then put them into our financial statements as notes to the financial statements. At that time, the state had no mechanism for us to do anything about it, but shortly thereafter, they, in about 2009, the state put into an effect and started working towards putting a trust fund availability to each of the towns together. In 2012, we adopted that, and we put $10,000 to start the account off at that town meeting. Since then, what we have been doing as a town, and what was approved at town meeting, is that, and we had recommended this through the Finance Committee as well as your board, is we've split the health insurance account that we fund each year, and there's two sections now to it. One goes to the trust fund, which is for retirees, and the other one is for current employees that are here right now in the health insurance. That way, we have a pretty good idea of what is it that we're obligated to for the retirees versus who's here currently. And I know that that had been a question that had been asked by previous boards here and some of the members yourselves, as well as the Finance Committee. With that amount going into the trust fund, the retiring portion of our actual health costs is also paid out of that. Our hopes and what we've been planning was that we were going to have a little bit each year be left over in that trust fund that would start accumulating. We were pretty close the first year, it really didn't do too much. I think last year, I think we accumulated about $100,000 extra, and we're hoping to continue that going forward. Now, I realize that this is a very small amount as you work forward towards a $68 million balance that's due, but there is a plan in place. With GASB-75, which next came, they made us take that liability that was just discussed as a financial note, and they made us actually put that into the financial statements. In the financial statements now, it becomes a part of your fund equity and your balance, and it has quite the dramatic effect on it. Luckily, all the other towns and governments have to do this at the same time, so we don't look like we're doing any worse or better than any of the other government entities. So now that 75 has come into effect, we're taking a look at how do we fund this? And as we looked at it, and I became quite panicked at this large number here, I said, you know, "What are the different options that we could do?" And I weighed this out with Alan, as well as the advisor from Odyssey, and what we came up with is a plan that is being used by many of the communities around us as well, and that is that retirement is in the exact same boat as this. Plymouth County retirement is also underfunded. The people who've worked here, they have, you know, obligations that are going to need to be met for their future retirement. And it's, incidentally, just about the same amount as the $68 million for the OPEB. And so what happened was they decided at the Plymouth County level to take and start charging us additional money each year and put it towards that. Currently, in our retirement payments that we make now, there's about $1.8, $1.9 million of that goes towards this unfunded liability that will need to be paid out for the people who are working now but have not yet retired. That should be paid up in full in about 2033, I believe.
31.
31. So in 2031, that gets paid off, and the payment at that point in time that we'll be using to pay off the unfunded balance will be about $5 million instead of the $2 million now. Now, once that payment drops off, that'll leave $5 million available that we've been raising each year that will not be needed for any other purpose. Well, it is needed for another purpose. The other purpose is to pay off OPEB at that point in time. So you simply shift over what you've been accumulating and raising at a certain amount each year from one place that needed the money at first, which is the Plymouth County retirement, to this OPEB liability. And that will take us somewhere out to 2050, 2060, in order to pay off the second one. And I had spoken with Alan about, you know, the fact that I really wish that we had known about this, because, you know, they came out and tell you about a very large liability like this, and then they only tell you about their option that they're offering at Plymouth County. I know we're trying to pull out from them on the health insurance, and I wouldn't understand if it was the decision of the board to go forward with taking a different fund and placing it with them if we're pulling out on the health insurance. Also, I know Alan had a quick analogy that he brought before me previously that I think actually sums it up very quickly. Is there any questions on the details on this?
Questions?
It can be very dry, I know. You're looking at numbers and you're looking at payouts that are going to go out, you know, another 30, 35 years by the time we're done, but this board, Eric and I, and virtually everyone, have been saddled with, you know, you can talk about the federal deficit or whatever, but in our particular case, those benefits have accumulated, there's an obligation to pay them, and the funds have not been available. So what we're doing now, and the first thing to do is, I explained to Eric, I said, "So it's kind of like this, Eric. You've got two credit cards. They both have balances on them. Now, we have a balance to do with Plymouth County, and then we have our other post-employment benefits that are obligated on medical and dental and life insurance. Plymouth County's a retirement account. We're attacking that. We're paying what we have to pay annually and knocking it down by about $1.8 million, 1.0 right now. We're paying that credit card off with the idea that, and the Finance Committee has been appraised of this all along in previous boards, that in 2031, when that credit card is paid off, we're going to take those excess funds and we're going to attack the other credit card, so we can pay that balance off in the year somewhere around 2054, or when you're all celebrating my 100th birthday. And I understand, we've been saddled with this obligation, but we're addressing it. And I want to tell the board right away, we've worked hard to get out of the entanglement of, it's not Plymouth County specifically, it's Mayflower Healthcare Insurance, and lack of information, non-cooperation. I just don't want to get back in bed with the same people that aren't giving us the information we ask for on healthcare, because they say, "But trust us, this time it'll be different with the retirement accounts."
Yet here, they didn't give us the information on this.
We have the information, and we have a plan, and I didn't want to leave both the public watching last meeting or this board with the sense that we're not fully aware of the other post-employment benefits program, and that previous boards in town meetings, and the administrator, and the accountant, and the Finance Committee, we've addressed it, and we have a plan. And I think going forward, even future Finance Committees will know this is the plan. We talk to them every year, and I'm sure whoever replaces us going forward will say, "This has been the plan all along," and hopefully they stick to it.
Just in terms of the trust fund, like, do we, and every year, like, do we realize any, like, returns in terms of interest or anything else, or is it just...
There is some interest on it.
But it's minimal probably right now.
Right now, it's minimal interest that we're getting right now, and there's also extreme restrictions on what you can do with investing in as well.
We can't speculate on Fidelity Biotech, for example. There are very limited funds that we can go...
They don't allow you to be extremely risky. I see that rate of return says roughly 6%, though that's fairly conservative.
Anything else?
How will this affect our bond rating for future borrowing for any other town projects?
I've actually talked to Eastern Bank, who actually does the sales of our bonds for us, and they said that they see that all the other towns are pretty much in the same boat that we are in, and a lot of them are signing on to the same type of idea of, if we're being forced to do it on our retirement and that drops off in that year, why wouldn't we want to obligate those funds right at that point to this same type of obligation, which is almost the same amount, actually.
When that obligation's gone in 2031, we're hoping the Finance Committee in town meeting doesn't have a party with the extra money. Obligate it to this other bill and let them party in 2054.
I'm sure we won't be too concerned.
It's good to see we were operating ahead of the curve, though.
We were.
You've been preaching this since it came out.
Since it first came out.
Eric's done an outstanding job.
Good job. Thank you very much, Eric.
Okay, next up, item number four, we have training update.
Mr. Chairman, there were a lot of changes that have come out of the last legislative session, including public document requests, rules, timetables, et cetera. There's also the ethics minutes, conflict of interest. We are meeting with the Department Heads, we're scheduled right now for February, the second, I apologize, the second Tuesday in February, we'll be meeting with them, and we'll be scheduling two dates for all committees and everyone. We have to get them up. We do have a public records, by state law, the town clerk does it, but in this case, all department heads. The town clerk is designated in the town. However, in practice, in the town, all department heads forward all the public documents to me. We do have already, we're already doing a lot of what the state's doing or asking, but tracking all your requests and, now, the difference is now we have to submit a sheet at the end of the year to the Secretary of State's office on what requests are received and how they were resolved. But just letting the board know, we're updating all the committees, all the department heads, and we'll be coming with recommendations, I believe, possibly even the next meeting. Mr. Clifford and Mr. Galvin weren't available for this meeting, so we are putting that off. I think the final rules were just, even on public documents, were just promulgated December 15th, you know, prior to Christmas, and I know between vacations and busy season and all that, but we are addressing those. Mr. Chairman, with your permission?
Yep.
Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Just wanted to give you a complete street update. The Complete Streets workshop was in October, and Dave Taylor had attended that workshop in the department, Highway Department through Dave Taylor and Marcy, and certainly Susan down to the Highway Department, submitted a policy which was approved by the Board of Selectmen. We scored a 95 on that. We have now reached out to what is basically Tier Two, and we are looking to, we have a consultant coming on board so that they can get a proposal in for the Complete Streets and a plan primarily, I think, street number one, according to the Highway Department, will be Union Street. And once we've completed that first phase of about $50,000, up to $50,000, but ours is down around $34,000, our proposal, we would then be eligible to get up to $400,000 under the Complete Streets program. So it helps you revamp to, and certainly, we just had our own tragedy here in Rockland, but we'll be able to revamp some of our safety mechanisms, sidewalks, crosswalks, bike paths, et cetera, on our streets. It tries to encompass a little wider variety of safety measures, et cetera, on the streets rather than the old days of lay it out, pave it, and be done with it. We just have to deal with more traffic these days. Somebody was telling me they used to play kickball on Knott Street. I can't imagine people doing that anymore. So I wanted to update you on Complete Streets.
Okay, thank you. Next up on the new business, item number six, we have a subordination request from Wayne Darrell, CDPG Program Director. Mr. Chaka?
We have a request for, it's just, we've done this a million times, somebody already had a loan through the Community Development Block Grant, they are refinancing their property. This property is, I'm looking for the address now.
134 Webster Street.
Do you have it?
134 Webster Street.
I'm missing it. There it is, 134 Webster Street. If the board would agree, Mr. Kimball can sign the subordination agreement. They're just refinancing.
So moved.
All those in favor? Vote. Okay, thank you.
We have a request, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Item number seven, the Class One License DVA Change.
Prime Motor Group is seeking to change their Doing Business name to Prime Hyundai South, and it does require a vote of the board. The information is in your packet, but there really isn't much to it other than a name change.
Motion approved?
Drag it.
All those in favor? So vote.
As you can see, it's a fairly brief agenda tonight. I did have last week off.
Well, we'll skip right over items eight and nine then.
Well, I always...
Number 10.
I always have that space holder for number 10 for my stuff, and then if something comes in, we can fill in eight and nine if we need it. In your packets, it's the annual request. As you know, the one place communities are allowed to deficit spend is in their snow and ice account. I am being told now that with the new bills in, as a result of a couple of small storms that we had, that we will be going into deficit, and we cannot deficit spend without a vote of the board.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor? So vote.
That Saturday, a snowstorm that was melted like a few hours later.
Still had to shovel it, though. We had people coming home, and that was the 17th.
And also, what people may not know is that the police department, when they're, especially at nighttime, and it's, the roads get bad in the middle of the night, they're the ones who make the call and call the highway super and tell them, "We need people out in the road, either salt or plowing." So just so you don't think the, you know, they just decide we'll go around and plow the snow no matter what. It's not the way it works, and they all do a good job, quite frankly, with the responsibilities toward it.
The departments are all in contact with each other, police, fire, highway in that situation, so the police certainly let the highway know, and sometimes it's a couple of spots. If, for whatever reason, water's in a certain area, they can call somebody out to San Juan intersection if necessary.
Yeah, like, it was a really treacherous out there, too. I was out trying to Christmas shop, and it was awful.
I was occupied by hydrant. So I have to shovel it.
Standing guard at the hydrant, I like it. The, I do want to let you know that nomination papers will be available for the annual town elections on January 9th in the town clerk's office. This year, the election will be held on April 8th. There are two three-year term seats for the Board of Selectmen, one three-year term on the Board of Assessors, one three-year term on the Board of Health, two seats for three-year terms on the Board of Library Trustees, one seat for three-year term on the Board of Park Commissioners, one seat for a three-year term on the Board of Sewer Commissioners, one seat for a three-year term on the Board of Water Commissioners, one seat for a five-year term on the Housing Authority, and one seat for a one-year term if somebody wants to try it out due to a vacancy, also on the Housing Authority. The Planning Board has one five-year term seat and one one-year term seat as a result of a vacancy. And the School Committee has one three-year term seat. And again, papers, nomination papers available January 9th. You must pick them up by the February 15th. February 17th is the last day to return those papers, and election will be held on April 8th. Thank you. Reminder, there is no all-night parking on the town streets throughout the town of Rockland throughout the winter. As always, we're looking for volunteers, and that would be the extent of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chaka. Next up, we have Selectmen comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of all the Board of Selectmen, and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. With that, Mr. Mullin.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Welch.
I'm good, I don't have any either.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, the only thing I have is, we just talked about pulling papers and elections and all that. I'm up this year, and I don't think I'm running again, or I shouldn't say I don't think I'm running again, I'm not running again. I won't be pulling papers. It's been nine years, I think, since I've been up here, and I look back, and my kids were seven and five at that point in time. I thought they were, it was going to be the busy time of my life. I'm learning now it's a busy time. Work has just exploded. When I started, we were one office, about 15, 16 attorneys. Now we're over 60 attorneys, nine offices, and I'm running three of them. So, I mean, that's why I wasn't here last week. I completely forgot about the meeting because I was trapped up in New Hampshire for two weeks. So I think it's time that I allow other people that have more time and more dedication and less family commitments at this point in time in their lives to run. Not ruling out pulling a Larry at some point in time, coming back in, but I can't say that's going to happen anytime soon, just, my wife reminded me, my kids are only going to be around for so long, and why spend the nights up here, although these have been pretty simple nights, but I don't know who's planning on running. The only person that I heard caught wind of was Michael Loughlin, who's the Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee, and, but I don't know.
Who's the other guy up this year?
And Corey.
Are you running?
Yeah.
I think I'm running again, yeah. Like, Mike, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old, so, you know, my motive is to keep my pulse and what's going on in this town. You know what I mean?
Well, that's it, yeah. It's the time to do it.
That's the time to do it.
Right, right. But I wish anyone that's running, good luck, and I have more to talk about as time goes on. Thanks.
Well, I'd like to personally thank you for your time on the board.
Definitely.
It's not done yet. My wife said I have, what, six more meetings, seven more meetings, so she's counting them down.
I love the word "ice" though.
Yep, and we were cleaning out the basement this year, and I had all my signs in October, and we had a dumpster, and she's like, "Let me throw them away." I'm like, "Ah, I don't know, I don't think so." I think I'm going to run. She's like, "Really?" And I should have listened to her. Now I don't know what to do with all my yellow and black signs, but...
Recycling bin.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Your neighbors.
They might fit in it.
Yeah, they would fit in it if I didn't have anything else. Right now, it's overflowing from Christmas. But, no, yeah, thank you. I mean, it's been fun. Hasn't been real fun.
Yeah.
Mr. Ryan?
Besides Happy New Year, I'm going to talk about the rubbish issue a little bit. Some people don't need all the room in their barrels because there's, like, my wife and I, there's only two of us, and we often have only half a barrel, and I always make sure I mention to my neighbors who have kids and things like that, that if you need extra space, feel free to put it in mine, it's all going to the same place. It's nothing personal, what you put your rubbish on top of anybody else's. So just, if you have extra room, let your neighbors know about it, especially if they're having trouble filling it up all, I mean, keeping theirs from overflowing all the time.
You can have a side business and start renting out spitties.
Well, just try to be friendly, you know, we're doing the friendly method this year, so, other than that, Happy New Year to all, and hopefully 2017 will be another positive year for the town of Rockland as the last few years have been. Things are going pretty good, and the Board of Selectmen is happy to be able to serve the people of the town of Rockland and keep this going, along with the town administrator and his staff. With that, it's all yours, Ed.
All right, thanks. I'm speaking about the Board of Health. The only concern that seems to be out there is typically when town hall was closed, we didn't have rubbish pickup, so that confused a lot of people this last time around, because in fact, we did have rubbish pickup on both holidays, well, conceivably holidays for town hall, but they weren't for the rubbish pickup, so...
Should have a schedule.
They do, they do, but...
On their refrigerator.
I did see some people running down the street, though, chasing after the rubbish truck, so...
I missed it last week.
My wife came running out.
So, if we can maybe put that on the website, you know, the town website, a little bit like a big banner or something, I mean, it's on there, but you have to look for it, but maybe in the future, you know, if we have holidays or something, that they are picking up that town halls closed, because the old norm was when town hall was closed, you had no trash service.
We don't have pickup in Bridgewater, but I could never remember when the transfer station was open. I finally took a picture, blew it up, and I put it on the door, going down to the garage where I keep the trash, so I could look at it and say, "Okay, I can go today." But they distributed the flyer, I mean, I had a call from a gentleman who was complaining about his trash not being picked up. I said, "You know, they distributed flyers. If you had that flyer, you could look at it." He says, "Yeah, it's in the drawer," but he'd rather call town hall to find out whether or not there's trash pickup.
And then the power of Facebook, everyone, I mean, every week's on, "What's up with trash?"
Well, it's confusing because...
We have more flyers if they want them.
Different pots of town are on different pots recycling, too.
Yeah.
They're alternating, so someone you know would say, "Well, do you have it, not have it?"
Yeah, I keep an eye on, I have one particular neighbor that I know knows the schedule to a T, so I see him put both out, I put both out. I see him put one I, but one...
You're the ones that are not able to, my wife and I.
Because we're both the town people, and we know what's going on.
We have more... We have more schedules if anyone needs one.
There you go.
I tell my kids, follow what Mr. Higgins does.
We're fielding trash complaints and not other complaints, right?
There you go.
Life can't be that bad, complaining about your trash.
We don't want people talking trash in Rockland.
Were you going to give a Town Hall Plaza update, Alan, or?
We can, I mean, it's in process, we're watching the weather, you know, it's amazing the number of construction managers that come out of the work and say, well, are you doing this, are you doing that, you're doing that? For a while, we were looking for volunteers, we were looking for people to help out and or plan and proposals and all of that, and, you know, we've had quite a bit of progress. We're looking forward to the sign going up. As most of you know, I had a previous life at one point, I had a building company, I was building some houses, I'm not unfamiliar, so we're, I'm kind of GCing the whole thing as we go through, and we're buying the product and getting the job done, but we did get slowed down a little earlier waiting for the sign and the availability and a few things, but it's hot on progress. We will be cutting, everybody's been worried about stress and expansion joints, those will be cut, and everything's, everything's being done.
Control joints.
So, looking forward to the electronic sign. I know Rick is looking forward to the electronic sign. Poor Rick's been out there in the rain, the snow, the wind.
Chasing it.
Changing the sign, because tomorrow is the hockey team's fundraiser, or whatever, we got to get out there, and we're looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to echo what Mr. Ryan said, like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and let's hope that 2017's a good year for Rockland again. So with that, that's all I have. Do we have a motion?
Do it, John.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you, and have a good night.
All right.